Started. I hear quite the buzz. Like there's a very hot mic. That might be better. All right, let's go ahead and get started. Thank you very much. Today is Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, Election Day. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake, and we will begin today with a moment of silence. Today, later on, we will be reading a Veterans' Day proclamation, and I would like to dedicate this moment of silence to those that have fought, put their lives on the line, or who have lost their lives to protect the things that make America so great. For example, today is Election Day, and this is one of our great parts of being in America, is our democracy and the ability to voice and express ourselves freely and take part in something that can change the history of our country, so much so as elections and other things. And I want to make sure that we recognize that there are those who are home who still need our support, that there are those that are abroad who still need our support, and I want us to hold them in our thoughts today.
You know, I do have a moment of silence. I apologize. And I would like to donate a moment of silence today. There was a historic apology. It is Native American Heritage Month, and there was a historic apology by the President of the United States for the boarding schools here in the United States. Many Native Americans were taken from their homes, forced to go to the boarding schools, and we know that many, many folks lost their lives from the Native American communities, and I just, I want to commemorate that today.
Thank you. Supervisor Simon, would you please lead us some further?
Let your agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'm going to move on to item number four, but I'm going to kind of break with protocol here. We have a number of extra items. None of them are urgent in taking up right now, and we do have other timed items. So rather than take the time right now to go through each one of those, we're going to go ahead and postpone that to a later time today, if that's okay with the rest of the board. And I do not believe we have any other extra items other than the ones that have been listed on the agenda.
We do not, Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. So we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Is there any item, any board member wishes to pull for further discussion? I see none. Let's go ahead and ask if anyone in the chamber or in Zoom wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda. Please raise your hand if you are in Zoom or come on up to the microphone if you are in the chamber. I see no movement in the chamber and no hands in Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 5.1 to 5.10.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move on to our 6.1902 AM item, Public Input. This is for anyone that wishes to freely express themselves to the Board of Supervisors on anything not on our agenda. You will have three minutes. Please come on up to the microphone in the chamber. Raise your hand in Zoom. I see no activity in either one, so we'll go ahead and close Public Input and move on to Item 6.2, 9:03 AM Pet of the Week. And we have a pet here today with us.
So this is Franklin. Franklin is a two-year-old German Shepherd mix. He is currently the longest resident at Animal Control at 64 days. He is a cuddle bug. He loves hiking, walking, playing with toys, loves other animals. So he's just an absolute love.
Danielle Parker?
Yes, could you please ask her to introduce herself? She's one of our new hires.
If we could please get an introduction from our animal control. If you can come to the microphone, I'm so sorry. If you could come to the microphone and make that introduction, that way everyone can hear you.
I'm Gabrielle Rio. I'm one of the new hires. I'm returning to Animal Control as an officer, but I was their panel work and adoption coordinator for the longest time up there, so.
Welcome back, and thank you very much.
You guys have a wonderful day.
You too.
He's got some votes he wants to vote on.
All right. Let's move on to Item 6.3, 9:04 AM Item, New and Noteworthy at the Library. And I know we have our librarian, Christopher Veach, with us.
Hello. Let me just share my background. Oh, I'm super small. So I'm Christopher Veach, county librarian. Thank you for giving me just a few minutes to talk about what's new and noteworthy at the library. And this month, I want to highlight a book that's been consistently high on the library's whole list for a few months now, The Backyard Bird Chronicles by Amy Tan. Amy Tan is an American author who grew up in Northern California and is best known for her novel, The Joy Luck Club, which was adapted into a film. The Backyard Bird Chronicles is not a novel, but a work of nonfiction. It's a diary of sorts with daily entries of Amy Tan's observations of the birds in her backyard in Sausalito, California. David Allen Sibley writes, "The drawings and essays in this book do a lot more than just describe the birds. They carry a sense of discovery through observation and drawing, suggest the layers of patterns in the natural world, and emphasize a deep personal connection between the watcher and the watched. The birds that inhabit Amy Tan's backyard seem a lot like the characters in her novel." The Backyard Bird Chronicles is available in print, audiobook, and ebook through the library system, and you can request this book or other materials through our online library catalog, which has the combined resources of Lake, Sonoma, and Mendocino County library systems. Requesting items is completely free, and items are sent to your local branch for you to pick up. And this Saturday, all branches of the library will be closed to observe Veterans' Day, but I want to highlight our digital content, which is available 24/7. Libby is our most popular service for ebooks, audiobooks, and magazines. And for streaming movies and documentaries, we have Canopy. Both are apps you can download on your phone or device, or you can access them on the web. There are thousands of titles for free with your library card. One great way to honor a holiday like Veterans' Day is to read, watch, or listen to the stories of veterans. Learning about others and remembering their stories is a powerful way to honor them because it fosters empathy, understanding, and a deeper appreciation for their unique experiences and sacrifices. I have links for both Veterans' Day and Native American Heritage Month on the library website under Quick Links. And you can find more information about our events and resources on our website at library.laketcountyca.gov, or of course, come visit your local library branch in Lakeport, Clearlake, Middletown, Upperlake, or on the Bookmobile. Thanks again for listening to what's new and noteworthy at the library.
Thank you so much. Any questions, comments? Thank you so much for all the activities that are happening at the library. We're going to move on to our 9:05 AM Item, 6.4, Presentation of Proclamation Designating November 2024 as National Native American Heritage Month in Lake County. We'll have both Vice Chair Crandall and Supervisor Simon.
Can everyone come up that's here for this proclamation, please? Okay. Good morning to everyone here in the chambers in Lake County. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California proclamation designating November 2024 as National Native American Heritage Month in Lake County. Whereas Lake County has been home to people for greater than 12,000 years and the richly diverse cultures of the seven tribal nations indigenous to Lake County, Middletown Rancheria Pomo Indians of California, Coronation of Northern California, Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Abidmatul Pomo of Upperlake, Robinson Rancheria Pomo Indians of California, and Elam Indian Colony. Have informed every aspect of our community's history. Policies and practices of the United States and earlier colonial governments deprived indigenous people in the state of California and Lake County specifically of land holdings, liberty, even life itself. And whereas Native Americans have helped to make our community stronger and more prosperous, on August 3rd, 1990, President of the United States, George H.W. Bush, declared the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. Thereafter, communities are commonly referred to as Native American Heritage Month. The bill read in part, "The President has authorized and requested to call upon federal, state, and local governments, groups, and organizations, and the people of the United States to observe such month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities." See, I'm getting older. I should have brought my glasses. Whereas, the landmark bill honoring America's tribal people represented a major step in the establishment of this celebration, which began in 1976 when a Cherokee Osage Indian named Jerry C. Elliott High-Eagle authored Native American Awareness Week legislation, the first historical week of recognition in the nation for native peoples. This led to a 1986, this led to 1986 with then-President Ronald Reagan proclaiming November 23rd through the 30th, 1986, as American Indian Week. President Barack Obama made an annual presidential proclamation on the 31st of October stating that each respective November would be the National Native American Heritage Month. "We celebrate the richness of the county's unique tribal history and traditions and the impact Native American cultures have had on every American." And whereas, the Lake County is committed to protecting the sovereign right of the Native American tribal organizations and institutions to strengthen their own communities. In observance of Native American Month, the County of Lake encourages all citizens to join in recognizing the accomplishments, contributions that Native Americans have made to our county, and salutes those who have sought to honor the important role of tribal, California tribal leadership in our country's past and present and future. Now therefore be proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake do hereby designate the month of November 2024 as National Native American Heritage Month in Lake County, California. Passed and adopted this fifth day of November 2024, and signed by the Chair of the Board, Bruno Suprate. Well, I want to give everybody a chance to speak, but I'm going to turn it over to you, Vice Chair.
Yes, no. This proclamation, I know, is for National Native American Heritage Month. I know we've done a couple. California is obviously September. But it was part of a meeting last week with the National Congress of American Indians, where all of the tribes in the nation come together and talk about legislation that's in the House and whatnot. And also, they display a really awesome veterans color guard, and I was honored to be a part of that. I know that's probably one of the next proclamations. But I'd just like to highlight how the Congress of American Indians and the tribes put that forward as one of the important aspects to Native Americans serving in the military. So I just wanted to add that, since a lot of the other things were in the proclamation.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to be here today. Thank you for the Board of Supervisors and the recognition of proclamation. My name is Benai Kim Cromwell, representing Robinson Rancheria. As our tribal chairman today, I'd like to thank all those that are here today, not only in spirit, but those that we think about, that these words meant a lot to. And it's a very important day today. And so just, thank you very much for this opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Larry Galuppi. I'm Vice Chairman of Middletown Rancheria. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for this acknowledgement and for time and consideration for our tribes in Lake County. I also was at the National Congress of American Indians Conference last week. It was a fantastic conference. There was over 4,000 attendees at this conference. So there was a tremendous time to network, seek friends you haven't seen for a long time, and also introduce friends that you've known but you haven't seen them again. It was really enlightening to see Mark Makarow as the President of National Congress of American Indians, also the chairman of Pachanga Band of Indians in Southern California. And when he did his presentation about getting the call to fly on Air Force One with the President, it was just mind-blowing for me as he explained it. I mean, he was almost brought to tears. So the acknowledgement of the travesty that happened a long time ago, before any of us were born, about the boarding schools, was so touching. So I was just happy to hear that President Biden made that quite clear. It was a travesty. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. Michael Marks, Vice Chair, Upperlake. I'll keep it short and sweet. Thank you, guys, for the acknowledgement. We do appreciate it. Although there are small steps, they are steps in the right direction of healing. So thank you all.
You know, sometimes we stand up here alone, sometimes a couple times, but it really feels good today. I just wanted to. This is a very significant year in Indian country, obviously. As we said, the apology for the boarding schools just happened this year, but it's also the 100th anniversary of the Indian Citizenship Act. And we weren't made full citizens at that point, but another one, a small step in the right direction here in the United States. So, you know, it's very significant in 2024. And one other thing that has never been done in California's history, here in Lake County, we have two tribal people sitting on the Board of Supervisors. All across the country, that doesn't happen. So we've taken a huge step forward in Indian country and here in the county. So I just hope that we continue along those lines, but it is historic. It may never happen again. So, you know, that's very powerful. So thank you very much. And I want to go ahead and turn it over to the Board of Supervisors for any comments.
You mentioned the Indian Citizens Act, and one of the tribal members from Robinson Rancheria, one of our ancestors, Ethan Anderson, was really instrumental in helping with that to pass. At that time, you know, do you think back to 1924 and the 1910s and all of that? For him to do that, he came from Carlisle Indian School and got an education, came back and lobbied and went to Congress all the time and helped with that. So that's coming from Lake County. So that's another important aspect to highlight.
What can I say? In my short time on this board, it's like a crash course. Like, whether you want to or not, you just have to learn all these things about what you're calling the small steps. But what I've seen in my two years on the board are giant steps. I've seen giant steps forward despite all the travesties of years past, despite the institutional bias that has broken up families, boarding schools, foster kids when they lose parents. Just so much, it's hard to process sometimes. But what I've been strucken by most in these two years is not the baby steps that you guys are taking, giant steps, giant steps toward understanding, giant steps toward healing. And I appreciate so much the leadership of Supervisors Crandall and Simon. It is historic, and I'm confident it will be repeated again, if not in Lake County and other counties that have a strong native population. So it is enough. We do have to appreciate the heritage and definitely acknowledge what has transpired in years past. But what I'm really excited for is this next round of heritage, the heritage where you have overcome so many struggles and not just survived, but thrived and taken those large steps toward building a true equitable future in partnership with all people in Lake County. So I'm just stunned and amazed, whether it's on issues of social awareness and healing or just being strong advocates for the environment, the first environmentalists here in Lake County. It's just full spectrum. So to see this group, this generation of leadership, and knowing that there are leaders who will follow in your footsteps makes me very excited.
I want to thank you both for bringing these proclamations. I say these because I believe we do about three each year, if I'm correct. There's the one in September. I believe there's indigenous people today that we do in October. That's right. And then this one for the national heritage. You made a brief statement that sometimes you're alone up there. You're never alone. And I say that to all of you guys. We recognize the history of what was before Lake County. The evolution of Lake County doesn't start when Lake County was created. It goes way beyond that. And I appreciate always learning more and building the relationships that we have with the folks that are right here on the dais. So thank you very much. And I believe her comment is ditto. So thank you very much. If there's no one else who wishes to speak on this from the public, then let's go ahead and take a picture. All right. Thank you for that. We're going to move on to our 9:06 AM Item, Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing Veterans on Veteran Day. And I'm hoping that Vice Chair Crandall will join me up there. And if you are a veteran in the room, please feel free to come up to the dais to join us. I don't want to force you, but invite it at least.
Yeah, but force them. Yeah, force them.
So today's proclamation is recognizing our veterans on Veterans Day. Whereas, the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the Armed Forces have been vital in maintaining our freedoms and way of life. And whereas, tens of millions of Americans have served in the Armed Forces of the United States during the past century. And whereas, hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the Armed Forces during the past century. And whereas, our state is home to more than 1.6 million veterans, the most of any state in the nation. And whereas, Lake County is home to approximately 4,500 veterans, or approximately 7% of our county's population, and, which I believe makes us one of the top counties for veteran population, for the per capita. Whereas, our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others. And whereas, their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States is founded can never fail to inspire us. And whereas, our veterans understand the important task before the American service, men and women now keeping watch. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors recognizes the legacy of loyalty, service, and sacrifice of our veterans to both our country and to our local communities. The Board of Supervisors honors the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights. Let it be further proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors will join a nationwide effort, Operation Green Light, in showing support for veterans by lighting our Lake County Courthouse in Lakeport Green from November 4th through the 11th, 2024. By shining a green light, the County of Lake and our residents will let veterans know that they are seen, appreciated, and supported, passed and adopted this 5th day of November, 2024, by the Board of Supervisors.
Yes, so I'd just take notice of another thing that I am really impressed by when it comes to Lake County is the Veterans Office that we have. There's some folks that I've talked to, friends from the past, you know, colleagues, also my comrades from, you know, being deployed and all that, who I serve with, struggle with getting their services, their VA benefits. And I'm like, I don't know how many here have had issues with it. Most people I talk to, you know, they, they get a lot of good help from this group. So I always tell these folks, hey, you can come move to Lake County. There's some good jobs here. You can become, you could switch and become a law enforcement agent here, officer here and whatnot, and get some good service from the Veterans Office. So, and a lot of veterans serve, I know one that's not here, I know he's probably working, is Vance. He helped out with the Clash Against Trash. And he, just out of the blue, hey, I'll help you out, just like we did, like Fort Lewis on the Back Forty, so just cleaning up garbage. So anyhow, thank you all for coming and serving. And whoever wants to speak next, I think maybe the undersheriff would like to say some words.
I had a feeling that was going to happen. I'd just like to thank the Board for this proclamation. It is Veterans Day. And just on that note, I'd just like to thank all veterans for your service. I think one of the best quotes I ever heard a long time ago is, freedom isn't free. It is something that has to be fought for every day, not only in the military service, but law enforcement and even with the Board of Supervisors to ensure that the ideals of this country are lived up to and met. And that is the services of everything that we do for our community. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
Oh, I thought EJ was running.
So what I'm going to say is that the men in uniform and women, they put on the uniform to look the same, right? So it's, they're not looking for, for the recognition up here. They're serving all of you, they're serving the rest of the country. So it's probably pretty uncomfortable to come up here. If, if we were and we were in uniform, maybe we'd feel a little bit better. But, but I appreciate you being here. I appreciate the recognition, though we don't like to be recognized. And I'm speaking for myself there, but, but I do appreciate the fact that it is recognized. Thank you all.
There is also a veterans event, Canakdi Vista, on Monday, starting at 10 o'clock. And so I know that that's, it's something that happens annually. So if you're a veteran and you want to go to a celebration, they usually do the 21-gun salute and all of that at Canakdi Vista, starting at 10. There's a lunch and everything, so, yeah.
And just his last words, that's why I invited, rather than, Lars is hiding from me. That's, that's why I invited people up, rather than requesting that you come up. I recognize that. But I do want to say, I really appreciate that you continue to serve in a different capacity and serving your communities. I just think that's something that needs to be recognized as well. It wasn't a one-time thing. It is a continual part of your life to continue to serve, and I appreciate that. Let's go ahead and take a photo.
Can we take some other comments? Just, just thank you, you know, what can you say? Thank you. Today may not be the day where we ultimately heal some of the things that divide our nation, but one thing that has always been a constant is the men and women who serve in our military serve the country as a whole. And they also serve who stand in wait. So while we appreciate and acknowledge those who have lost their lives and have lost limbs and health in frontline service, we also have to recognize the, the much larger legions who have served in our military in lesser roles, not lesser roles, but in non-combat roles here on this side of the, of the ocean. So many times we think, oh, life will never be the same. Public service is a lost art. We see in the men and women who serve in our military exactly what motivates them, and that is a commitment to service. And when we see people who have come from our military services continue to serve on the domestic front and be overrepresented in positions of leadership, including right here in Lake County, it just stands for the principle of service. And so I'm so appreciative, whether you're in active military now, or if you're now serving the county in a different role as a veteran. Thank you so much for that commitment to service and commitment to our country.
I just want to say thank you. I know that's what you guys hear, but thank you to you and your families that also serve with you when you're deployed. I know how important that is. You know, there's a bunch of agencies, obviously, that, you know, make sure that, that our folks serving are honored with a box every once in a while, you know, you guys, all of the things that happen. But I also want to say, as a, as a, sitting up here on the dais, it's been an honor when you get a call from a veteran to try and help them get to the services they need. But also, I've been able to work, at least in District One throughout the county, to help with setting up mental health services, make sure that our veterans that come back that need those services have a place to meet and, you know, really talk about the experiences and the life changes that happen when you serve, because it is a sacrifice that nobody understands except for you, who have been veterans. So thank you very much.
Ain't just Army, is it? Air Force.
I'm Army.
I know.
Yeah. Those guys are mostly Air Force.
Yeah.
I saw, I saw you got a look.
Army Air Corps.
Wow. Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to our 6.6 item, 9:20 a.m. Lake County 2050 Update. I see that we have Community Development Director Maria Turner with us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The host has stopped my video. Host, if you'd like to start my video. I have good stuff to talk about. Ooh, yes. Thank you. Good morning. We are right in the middle of LEPAC season. Our local area plan advisory committees are meeting all week, morning and evening, both virtual and in person, to convey and collect public input and develop recommendations for the Board of Supervisors regarding community-specific priorities. The Lake County 2050 Project is an update of our general plan, covering county-wide elements or topics, and an update of all eight local area plans. So this is an awesome opportunity for us to gather community visions, plans, what, what our residents want to see the government do for the next decade or two, and as well as an updated expression of what the community really values in our neighborhoods. So far, everyone across the board values our rural character, our small-town nature, the close-knit community that we have, and the way that we work together in times of adversity. So we take priorities that are communicated like that and turn them into objectives and policies and implementation plans that give us our working orders on how we can make sure that we're preserving what Lake County holds dear, while allowing for additional development in a manner that is an asset to our communities and not a detriment. I would encourage anyone who has any interest at all to please check out the calendar of our events. Some of our meetings are easy, as easy as clicking the join meetings link, or you will find an in-person meeting in a community near you, as we're doing in-person local area plan advisory committee meetings also. Just this week, we will have in-person and virtual meetings in the following communities: Lower Lake, Lakeport, shoreline communities, which includes Lucerne, follows the, the Highway 20, to include Glenhaven, Clear Lake Oaks, Double Eagle, Paradise, Spring Valley, sorry, Paradise Cove, Conote, and areas of unincorporated Clear Lake. We're also having meetings for Cobb, Upper Lake Nice, that's one, combined in one planning area, Lower Lake, the Riviera's, and Middletown. Those meetings will all be happening virtually and in person between now and Saturday. So please check your calendar, or check the website at lakecounty2050.org for a full calendar of our events, as well as lakecountyca.gov in the agendas and minutes for the boards and commissions. Scroll down on the county website to the local area plan advisory committees, because they're all in one list, right there. Let's see. Sorry. What else? Oh, LEPAC season will go until the middle of November, so November 15th or 16th. That's why we're, we're scurrying, to make sure we gather as much public input as we can during LEPAC season, the next couple weeks, which will then inform our core team as we pivot from gathering public information to actually drafting the, the draft versions of the local area plans and general plan. So while I'm begging, I was strongly encouraging, recommending, and vehemently requesting public input over the next couple weeks, then we'll give you a break over the holiday season, and we'll come back around once we have the draft plans and look again to the public and our LEPACs and our general plan advisory committees to start taking a look at the drafts that we have created, see what we're missing, see what we need to change, and make sure we're getting stuff right. That is my Lake County 2050 project update for today, and I warmly welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for that update. And I saw that you have quite a busy schedule coming up for the next two weeks with all your LEPACs. So good luck to you and your team for all of that, and I hope that you get the public input that you're looking for. Any comments or questions from board members?
Did I hear you drop the website? Just because I don't see a staff report on today's agenda. So if you didn't already know where all that good information you were talking about lives, general public, lakecounty2050.org, is that the correct link?
That's exactly right. LakeCounty2050.org.
And I believe there's also a email sign-up on there. So if you want to get e-blast about all those upcoming meetings, if you haven't already signed up for that email distribution list, that would probably be a good idea as well. Would that be correct?
That's absolutely correct. Thank you.
Okay. Always dropping the hook. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
And just to change hats right now, as the Chair of PEG, I am in communication with your staff to see how we can get those meetings on video, so we can upload them to YouTube, so people can look at what the conversation was, why things were done the way they were done, or why things progressed as they have. So we're going to do our best to be there. I believe we will be there tonight, and we'll see about the rest. And I know we're communicating with other videographers to see what can be done. So trying to make sure that there's transparency to the process, other than just those that can make it there in person.
Absolutely. Thank you. It is a community vision-driven document, so the maximum amount of community input we get makes it a better project.
Thank you very much. I see no further comments or questions from board members. I'm going to open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Come on up to the microphone and raise your hand and zoom. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. I do want to give you kind of on-the-spot question. I know that there's a lot going on between the overall Lake County 2050 general plan update, there's all of the area plans also that are occurring simultaneously. There was a plan put together in order for all of that to come together in the right way. Are there any things that have been learned that need to change? Any different level of support that you need from the Board of Supervisors to make sure that we accomplish our goal? Just kind of checking in.
Thank you. Well, since I consider each one of you sort of mavens in your community, you, you network, you know everybody, you connect people, I would just ask that you continue to get the word out. Encourage people to check out our website, because they can either find links to attend meetings or just put in their input in an email. We are collecting everything in one central digital repository, so that we don't lose a single piece of public input. So thank you for asking. Our team is working collaboratively to support this LEPAC season effort, and we're, we're actually getting some really good input. So I'm excited about the future of Lake County, and how much people really love it here and, and care, and are taking time out of their day, you know, to, to convey that to us.
Thank you very much for that response. And due to my affiliation with PEG, and I've been to a couple of the meetings that you've put together, you are getting a good amount of people that are showing up to give you their feedback, which is great. Let's go. Supervisor Green?
Just a quick follow-up. Just because some people may not, ooh, general plan update, that's the meeting I want to get to, or the local area plan update. But general plans and area plans, for, for those that follow those sorts of things, actually do contain some really interesting subjects organized by topic. So, for example, in the land use element, we talk about agriculture, we talk about, we talk about water resources, we talk about air quality. There's a lot of things in a general, that go into a general plan, and one reason they go in there is they do guide our future land use decisions. So without putting you on the spot, it kind of occurred to me that when some site-specific projects have come before the board recently, some of those same areas of concern come up, air quality, water quality, and what have you. But the general plan and the area plans really are the rich place to provide that input, because then you can guide not just what's happening with a single project, but with the county as a whole over a period of years. Can you, can you give us just a little checklist of what those topics are that are being addressed in your, in your general plan update? Because they're exciting, and people want to hear about it.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. So different chapters or topics within the general plan and the local area plans include land use? Like, what, what can I do at this parcel versus over the, over at that parcel? Can I have a, this type of a business in that location? The community has a voice in that, in this document, in the general plan and the local area plan. We also deal with resource conservation, the health of Clear Lake, circulation, transportation. We're also performing a climate vulnerability analysis that will inform our safety element. So it takes climate change and what we're experiencing in Lake County- So it takes climate change and what we're experiencing in Lake County into consideration as we plot out our future. What else? One of the things the public needs to know is that we're kind of switching things up from how we've done it traditionally. Usually, you know, the area plans are secondary to the general plan. But since we're doing an update of all of them at the same time, we intend to present the state with the general plan and all of the area plans as integrated elements. So there won't be a question anymore of which is more important, which takes priority, because they're going to be synchronized, so that some of the topics that are covered in the countywide elements are now getting inserted into the community, the local area plan elements, such as also the new topic, environmental justice. That is ways of looking at communities that we have that have historically been disadvantaged, and how to help bring that, lift up that community as well. So that's why the public input of people from all walks of life in Lake County is essential, because we don't want, we definitely don't want Maria Turner's vision for Lake County for the next 20 years. We want to have, we want to have final documents that when people in Glenhaven read it, they're like, yeah, okay, I see, I see my stuff in there. Or Upper Lake Nice, yeah, you know, this is how we feel as a community, and we want it to resonate with the residents in our community on a local and very granular level, as well as a countywide level.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Randall?
So just wanted to highlight and show my appreciation as well, Maria, for this work. A lot of times, in the town councils, projects will be brought to them, especially, you know, if it's something that a lot of the community has an issue with. And as a matter of fact, Betsy usually says this, this is the opportunity, Betsy Khan, that is, usually says, this is the opportunity, these general plans, these lake area plans, are opportunities for you to put that input in place upstream, basically, so that that way it's crafted and molded to what the community's concerns are. And so coming to these meetings, making that input, giving it out, can ensure that some of these projects have to meet different criteria, or have specific meetings, or even may not even be allowed to exist if it's put in place, right? So this is very important. If you're out there and you are commonly having issues with specific, you know, businesses or projects, then this is the place to go to accentuate those concerns. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. We've already opened it up for public input. We received no public input, and this is just simply an update and presentation. And if there's anything further from Director Turner?
That's all for now.
All right. Then thank you very much for the, thank you for the update. We look forward to seeing you at those meetings.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to item 6.7, or 9:30 a.m., public hearing, consideration of community development block grant funding for the Business Assistance Loan Program and the Employment Training Build Program. We have Ben Rickelman and Mr. Lucas.
Good morning, Board. Ben Rickelman, Deputy County Administrative Officer. With the CDBG Economic Development Program, administered by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, we're required to come to the board twice, so we came on the 8th of October, and this is the second time. So this is for, it would be one and a half million for the economic development program over the counter. So the low-interest loan program for small and micro enterprises in Lake County, an energy system program we would be supplementing and supporting. This is with North Edge Financial, a community development financial institution that some businesses work in Lake County. They did get the money from the Department of Energy, so that's good news. That happened in the last few weeks, and so that program's under development. And then a facade improvement program. Additionally, it was discussed at the last hearing for the competitive public service portion to apply for $300,000 for the build program, which is a nonprofit here in Lake County that is both a workforce development program, and then concentrates on construction and rehabilitation of single-family residences. Additionally, there was a request from the board to go after the total available amount with the over-the-counter award, so there could be another one and a half million with CDBG projects. So I reached out to all the departments. Special districts did get back, they have some water tanks in North Lakeport that might be a good project. It's around 1.8 million. There is a timing issue, though, with it, so there's a bunch of work that has to go with CDBG application, so, and we had already had the resolution with the initial programs, with the first one, and this resolution. So CDS is going to work with them to get the project ready for CDBG's submittal for the spring notice of funding availability. So we would go ahead with the submission with the 1.5 million economic development programs, and then the 300,000 for the build program. There was one other issue that popped up, so with the Cobb Water Project, with it being a CDBG project, HCD sent some auditors here, and so that was the week before, and they, it kind of coincided with the due date for the, not the due date, when the over-the-counter window opens. So CDS communicated several times with HCD to try to change that. HCD was unwilling to do that, so the auditors came that time. So that is why we are now doing this on the 5th. HCD did send a notice saying the OTC window was closed, but CDS talked with HCD and explained the situation with the auditors, and so HCD said we should still apply, and they will take into consideration how their inflexibility with the audit timing impacted the county's Did I cover everything, Jeff?
Yeah, thanks, Ben. It's been a little hectic. We also wanted to make sure that the board knew that we will be talking, following up with Ben's interaction with the departments, and searching out other projects, public facility improvements and those kinds of things with these funds for the next go-round, and prepare for the next go-round. I think we're in a public hearing, are we not, Chair?
Yes, we opened up the public hearing.
Okay. And I think we do have a guest from the Lower Lake Water District who called our office a couple of weeks ago, and I invited her to make a public comment during the public hearing period in regards to a project related to the water district. So not only do we have, we're kind of trying to broaden out and get information from other sources, so that next time that we can pursue funds for infrastructure for low-mod households, that'll benefit low-mod households.
Okay. I do need to check in with county council for the process for the public hearing. The public hearing's been opened. Is there anything else I need to do, other than open up for public comment?
That is all.
Okay. Just wanted to check in and double-check. Before I do so, any other comments? And sorry to ask, can you please introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jeff Lucas with Community Development Services.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any further comments before I bring it back to the board? All right. Supervisor Green?
Just a quick question. I know I'm not going to like the answer, but the 1.5 million for ED, economic development for for-profit businesses, so many nonprofits in our Lake County are struggling. And so I'm going to guess this particular bucket of money is designed to support programs or projects that create or retain jobs, but it's curious to me that we would limit that to for-profit businesses, when not only do our nonprofit agencies create and retain jobs, they also create economic multipliers, they fill service niches that our for-profits can't or won't do. And so I may just be barking at the moon, however, briefly, but are we imposing a strict understanding that only for-profit businesses can create the type of economic benefits that CDBG funding would be appropriate for? Or is that something hard and fast that HCD applies on these NOFA's, and there's just no getting around it? It's statute. Okay. So I'm just barking at HCD. Is there some equivalent funding stream elsewhere in CDBG landia that would eventually give some glimmer of hope that we could offer assistance to nonprofit organizations?
Let me answer the first question, just briefly. So in the economic development component of community development block grant funds, federal regulations require that the funding be used for for-profit businesses to create the jobs. And so the answer is, we cannot use these funds for that purpose to provide, and we've asked that, we've tried to work that a little bit, and the answer's been no. The other way to maybe look at it is, through the build program, for example, NCO would be the operator, as they are now, on behalf of the county, and so those funds would be provided to NCO. Now, it would primarily go, I mean, pass through the county, and the county would provide those funds for those folks to do that work that they're doing now. So it's a, it is a way to provide some funds for nonprofits. There are other services and programs available through the community development block grant program, but they're not designed specifically to create jobs through the nonprofit systems. And it may be worthwhile for the board and for staff to, we could have a workshop, perhaps have some representatives from HCD come and talk a little bit more about what can and can't be done with the program, to maybe get us to see, take a broader look at what we might want to do with the funds in the future. That's something we could arrange, but the answer is no. I'm sorry. Not our rule, theirs.
Any other comments or questions? So I appreciate the update. That was kind of a surprise. I don't know when that happened, at the 11th hour, but I'm glad to hear that they have, we have the option of still submitting, and that the window may have reopened for us. I appreciate the effort. I saw the emails to try and solicit for further projects. I thought it was $2.1 million, but maybe it was $1.6 million. Either way, there was money that was still available, that was more on the competitive side of things for infrastructure. And I believe that there may be another NOFA opening up again in spring. Am I correct on that?
That's what we anticipate.
Okay. Even with the current status with the California budget, that's still anticipated?
We'll have to see, but as now, that's what HCD is telling us.
Okay. So I look forward to seeing how we can capture all of those funds in the springtime, and we'll see if we can get some shovel-ready projects that meet the guidelines of CDBG and are prepared for that.
Just, these are federal funds that pass through the state to us, and so it's federal funds, and while the state's got their issues, it's a different funding source.
They have a printing machine, California does not. All right. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate what's here. Again, really appreciate the fact that conversations were had in order to break through that wall that was created earlier this week, so that we have a chance of getting those funds and moving forward. If there's nothing further from the board, let's go ahead and open it up with public comments, and I believe we'll start with our Lower Lake Water District. Please.
So my name is Summer. I'm here on behalf of Lower Lake County Water District, number one. I've been working really hard to try to get funding for our district. We are obviously, you know, a public water agency. We need to figure out how we could get funds besides our ratepayers, because with everyone struggling, and, you know, we're trying to minimize our ratepayers' bills going up. So I've been working really hard to try to get grant funds, figure out what projects the state or federal will approve. CBDG grant funding came across my radar. I asked some questions. I found Mr. Lucas's phone number, called him. Unfortunately, we missed the deadline for this one. I have a letter that I actually wrote for District One Supervisor. I didn't get a chance to get it to you, but if you don't mind, I'll just read it, and I could leave a copy for you?
Please.
Okay. So my name is Summer Fiora. I'm writing on behalf of Lower Lake County Water District, number one, LLCWD. I'm writing to bring to your attention a crucial infrastructure upgrade project proposed by LLCWD to be included in the Lake County's Community Development Block Grant Application in 2025. I believe this project will significantly enhance our local water management, safety, and operational efficiency. LLCWD is seeking to modernize our district's water distribution metering system. The current infrastructure is outdated and pushing near the end of its lifespan, around 20 years, which then begins to lead to inaccurate readings and water loss that is difficult to track. Leveraging updated technologies will improve accuracy and efficiency in water usage monitoring, as well as ensure safety of water operators. Key components of the proposed project include advanced metering infrastructure, AMI, with automated data collection. This upgrade will allow for better monitoring and management of water distribution, reducing leakage and minimizing water loss, which contributes to our overall goal of water conservation, as well as will keep our ratepayers aware of their usage and signal instant leak detection and notification. By transitioning to an automated system, manual meter reading, which is prone to errors and is labor-intensive, will be largely eliminated. This improves the safety of water operators and reduces costs and carbon emissions. The new system will include remote shut-off capabilities in case of emergencies or unauthorized use, which allows day-to-day operations to become more efficient. Funds provided by CBDG Funding will be used specifically for procurement of smart meters and related technology, installation and integration costs, training staff on the new system, and initial operational support during the transition phase. Benefits of this project go beyond the operational enhancements. By improving efficiency and accuracy of water distribution, we aim to reduce operational costs, which could lead to more sustainable water rates, enhance emergency response capabilities, safeguard community health and customers' property, and promote environmental sustainability by minimizing water waste. We appreciate your consideration for supporting this project through allocation of block grant funding. Your endorsement will pave the way for LLCWD to embark on a transformational journey, setting the precedent for other districts, and reinforcing our combined commitment to our community's well-being. We look forward to working with you on this project and future projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you want to pass that letter in to us, we'll make sure Supervisor Simon gets it.
Yep.
Thank you for that. Are there any other public comments regarding this item? I see no further movement in the chamber, and no hands in Zoom, and so I'll bring it back to the board. Anything further before we take action?
Just look forward to working on these projects, and we appreciate CDS's support.
Brief question. What's the timeline for receiving the funds?
It says in the NOFA, kind of late spring, but HCD is, Jeff's kind of chuckling, and kind of operates on their own timeframe, so we have a date in the NOFA, that's May, but we'll see.
Doesn't always mean what it means.
As Ben says, that's our hope, that they have a hard time sticking with their schedules, but that's what we understand it to be.
Okay.
I do have just a couple more brief comments. I want to thank Ben and the county staff. This cycle's been...
This cycle's been challenging. And I also want to thank the housing staff and community development staff for their assistance in providing information that we used and referred to in the build application because of the tie-in between that program and what the housing program folks are doing too. So thank you.
Thank you for your last comments. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, just had a follow-up question on, for the Lower Lake Community Water District. Do you think this is a program that could go through CDBG? I want to make sure if there's going to be energy spent, that we're pushing it in the right direction.
It would be eligible through the block grant program, CDBG program requirements. We did make an application. I'm not sure if you recall this sometime ago, three years ago, I think. We made application on behalf of the district through the county for the loop.
The intertie. Yes.
And unfortunately, because there was a question on the, there was a couple of audit situations that HCD did not allow us to, they did not approve the application. But it wasn't because of an eligibility issue with the actual project itself and that district, that the district includes low, moderate household income above 51%. So the numbers there will work. And what I understand from the project, it would be eligible.
Okay.
I'm sure there's going to be other eligible projects coming up, and then the board would have to, of course, make a determination of what.
Well, I appreciate the conversation. Obviously, I think we have two in my district. Anderson Springs, I think, is dealing with the same issue, you know, as far as metering. So talking with both, you know, seeing it now and both, maybe there's something. Just want to make sure we have a good focus. I was looking at the State Water Resources Control Board, too, see if there may be some opportunities there. But I'll follow up with you and see if we can continue the conversation and get it to the right place. So thank you. That was it.
Thank you very much. Looking for action on a resolution that is before us for the resolution. Resolution has been offered.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for changing my comments in a rather positive way. All right, we're at 10:07. Our next timed item is not until 11:00 a.m. Let's go ahead and touch on some untimed items. 7.2, Consideration of Letter of Support Regarding Caltrans Application to the California Transportation Commission, CTC, for the LAK29 Canocti Corridor 2B Project. This is a letter that Supervisor Simon and I received from the Area Planning Commission. We've been talking a lot when dealing with Caltrans and this big project that's been happening, where Part C is complete, Part B is in the works. We've been talking a lot about how to get support for the project and getting it from the Board of Supervisors as well as others. And so in front of you is a letter to provide that support, to begin the process of right-of-way purchases and getting the funding that they need in order to make that happen. And I did find out that there are issues with the letter, not big issues, but I think that it should say on the top, County of Lake Board of Supervisors, not Board of Supervisor, my mistake. And it probably shouldn't have my email address, either everyone's email address or not my email address. So I would just say, maybe take that off, and that would be good with me. Supervisor Simon?
This is just the continuation of the work that's been going on for, well, I would say 25 years now to finish up the corridor. It is the Canocti Corridor, obviously, and LTA, APC, you know, there's been many different presentations at the state level, other things, continue this project moving forward. So this is just another step in looking to continue the project. I know that, which I greatly appreciate, LTA and APC also reach out to the tribes. Middletown Rancheria will be doing a support letter for the project, also, you know, hopefully helpfully to bolster our collaboration and communication on federal dollars coming into the county. So, yeah, in complete support of this. Thank you very much for getting us on the agenda, Chair.
Absolutely. Any further comments? Seeing none, let's open it up for the public. We have Danny Wind.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Hi, my name's Danny Wind. I'm a Lakeport resident. I just wanted to offer some thoughts about this project, sort of in general. And you'll see that some of the themes I talk about today are kind of continuous with some other projects. So I just jotted some things down this morning. So first off, District One allows bicycles on all of our state highways. Several of the Canocti Corridor projects do not provide safe facilities for vulnerable road users. The recently completed Canocti Corridor project has a posted speed limit of 65 miles an hour, up 10 miles per hour from previous speed. Not only do these wider highways provide a higher and less safe 85th percentile speed, but these higher speeds also affect insect and wildlife populations, not to mention the physical distance wildlife must cross. And increasing the area of the roadway also increases the reoccurring costs for resurfacing every 20 to 30 years. I believe Caltrans doesn't currently have the capacity to adequately maintain the state highways that pass through our county, and this further increases the long-term financial liability of maintaining those roadways. So with all that, I do oppose the letter of support today, and furthermore, the project as a whole. I would actually ask that this plan is kind of sent back to the trying board with careful consultation from the Caltrans District One Safe Systems Unit. I do believe that this project is needed to reduce through traffic on the North Shore, but Caltrans has drastically shifted their approach over the last year. And I think that a project that was made 25 years ago might not necessarily reflect the values specifically for safety that our community has. So with that, thank you so much, and happy election day.
Thank you very much for your comments and also your constant participation in these types of topics. I see no further hands up in Zoom and no movement in the chamber. I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board for either final comments or action.
There are no more comments. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve the Letter of Support Regarding Caltrans Application to the California Transportation Commission, CTC, for the Lake 29 Canocti Corridor 2B Project.
Second.
Authorize the chairs.
Oh, with amendments and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Nice catch. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And if I can ask a favor, if we can get that letter signed, I believe that today might be the day of submission for the application. So I'll come in during one of our breaks and see if I can sign it. We're going to move on to item 7.3, Consideration of Board Appointment of the 2025 Rural County Representatives of California, RCRC, Delegate and Alternate. B, Board Appointment of the 2025 Golden Gate Connect Authority, GSCA, Board of Directors, Delegate and Alternate. C, Board Appointment of 2025 Golden State Finance Authority, GSFA, Board of Directors, Delegate and Alternate, not Delegate. And D, Board Appointment to the 2025 RCRC Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority, ESJPA, Board of Directors, Delegate and Alternate. And I believe we have Ms. Purdy today.
Good morning, Board. Carolyn Purdy, Administrative Analyst. I am actually just here to take your input on what is going to happen today on these appointments, which are an annual appointment for the RCRC. So with that, I will let you take the helm.
Thank you very much. We have proposals already on the memo. Those are the ones that we've had for the last year at least, if not two years. Anyone want to speak on those as proposed?
I'm still willing to serve in the capacity. I'm heavily involved with the group on the executive committee. There's a couple other that are coming open because of retirement, so balance that out. Won't try to take on too much, but if there's another leadership role that I take on, I'm going to make sure to balance on the same amount or whatever the case may be, but still willing to if that's the wish of the board.
I'm still willing to as well.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
And then, so the only change really from the existing would be on the Environmental Services, JPA. You would probably not want to make an appointment.
I always thought Lars was the delegate and...
Well, he's the alternate.
That's what's being proposed. Or it says the current members, but I always thought that Lars was the delegate and Supervisor Simon was the alternate.
I think we do need to appoint Supervisor Simon as the delegate, and then Lars does attend.
He's the alternate. He always attends.
But he attends. Gotcha.
Well, if he's the primary delegate and he won't be here in 2025, that wouldn't be a great appointment.
That change would be made at the January meeting.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. I think leaving things alone is good for the fact that relationships are important, and rather than having to start from scratch, continue the good work that's already been done by the two delegates that we have currently. And so I'm good with what's being proposed.
Yes.
All right. Let's open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see none in Zoom, no movement in the chamber. I'm bringing it back to the board for action. County Council, can we shrink that into one, or does it have to be four separate actions?
The suggestion here would be four separate actions because they involve different entities.
Thank you. So first one's RCRC Board of Directors.
Appoint yourselves. Okay. I move to appoint Supervisor Crandall as delegate and Supervisor Pisca as alternate to the RCRC Board of Directors.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Continue by moving to appoint Supervisor Crandall as the delegate and Supervisor Pisca as the alternate for the RCRC Golden State Finance Authority.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Supervisor Crandall as delegate and Supervisor Pisca as alternate to the RCRC Golden State Connect Authority.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And last one?
Move to appoint Supervisor Simon as delegate and Public Services Director Lars Ewing as alternate to the RCRC Environmental Services, JPA.
Second.
We have a motion and a sec...
I was just, I was on a roll.
You voted for yourself. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you for that. And let's just, staying on that topic, Consideration of Appointments of a Director and Alternate to the California State Association of Counties, CSAC Board of Directors for 2025. Again, we have a proposal in front. Any comments or questions on what's being proposed?
I agree with what you said before, is to keep things moving the same. That's the wish of the board, of course.
And I do apologize, it's not stated on the memo. Currently, I am the delegate and Supervisor Pisca is the alternate. And just want to say congratulations to both Supervisor Pisca and Vice Chair Crandall for your appointments to your committees on CSAC. That was good to see.
NACO.
Sorry, NACO. Through CSAC. If there's no comments or questions, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none in Zoom, no movement in the chamber, bringing it back to the board for action.
Move to appoint Chair Sabatia as Director and Supervisor Pisca as alternate to the California State Associations of Counties Board of Directors for 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's go ahead and go back to item 7.4. Okay. I felt I was being looked at. Consideration of Proposed 2025 Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting Calendar. A draft calendar has been provided for us to review. Are there any comments or questions regarding the proposed calendar? So I did want to offer one change. I did look at all of the upcoming CSAC and NACO conferences. I did not look at the RCRC conference dates. It's got overlap with some of our meetings. That doesn't mean that those meetings can't happen, so we'll see if we still have three supervisors that can remain behind for those, to have those meetings. But I did see that we have a full set of meetings in June, which includes our budget hearings on the 25th and the 26th. And then we have another full set in July, with the 4th of July being on Friday. Therefore, no day off taken around that time. And I'm just thinking, from a staff perspective, I would love to see us either cancel July 1st or keep it as a special meeting in case that we need it. But I would love to provide that opportunity for staff to take a summer vacation at that point in time, because it takes a lot of work to put stuff on the agenda, be here and available and all, all of that. So just my one proposal for a change, and seeing how others feel about that.
I feel good with it.
Well, my question is, July 8th would make me feel good, too. So I just, I get it, but if we want to give staff the break and they want to take advantage of the fourth holiday, then not having to post the agenda for the July 8th potentially could make a little more sense, but open to input from staff and you guys.
And my thoughts was, it's after budget hearing. Big hurrah, we're done, we finally made it, and so that was why. CAO Parker?
Staff supports July 1st.
Vice Chair Crandall?
Yes, so I see the budget hearings are on the, on June 25th and 26th, and just looking at the RCRC calendar, and this is something I could miss if need be. But there's, usually the chairs, I think it's the chairs meeting in their county is usually in May, but for some reason, it's in June this year, and I think it's because it's in Modock County. So it's that same week, June 25th, 26th. And I know Stephen's probably peering at me because it's like, if it goes a week sooner or something alike, obviously, there's a, the 19th is a day. I know it's moving it forward. So what I can do is, I don't know, I can just figure it out if that's the case, because I know that that's, it's looking like it would be, if anything, the only other time would be two weeks before, and that's not ideal. I don't, yeah, yeah, so.
I can't imagine other counties aren't having this problem.
Yeah.
And I'm willing to be flexible for the week of June 23rd. It doesn't have to be the 25th and the 26th. It could even be on the 24th. We could take that full day just to do, but so I'm willing to be flexible to make that work for you, because I don't think we can make it be that much earlier in Juneteenth, definitely.
I don't think so either. Yeah.
Mr. Carter?
Stephen Carter, Assistant County Administrative Officer. Yeah, the week of the 16th doesn't work very well because we need two days, so unless we did the 18th and the 20th.
And there would be a day in the middle, so yeah, I get that.
It does become difficult when we go earlier, we go in June, to have all the data ready from departments, et cetera.
Yeah, the departments and you need that time, so that's why I'm just mentioning it to see, you know, like...
What day is the meeting?
It's the 25th, it's, well, the 25th through the 27th. Usually, you get there on the 25th. I wouldn't have to leave after the meeting or anything. Yeah. That makes sense.
What part of Modock County?
All the way in the top right corner?
What I do know is it's really far. Let's see, it just says Modock County.
I would drive across.
Would you be traveling the 24th, like right after the board meeting?
I probably would, just because, but I mean, either way, we have to do the budgets, and I don't want to risk that at all.
Well, what about Monday, the 23rd, and we finish? Well, what about Monday, the 23rd, and we finish on the 24th and turn that 24th meeting into a budget hearing? That's a possibility.
I'm perfectly flexible for what's needed for that week.
I'm okay with that. Yeah. If everyone else is.
I'm very flexible.
I'm only looking this direction.
Because I'm thinking it's usually, I know last, this year's, you get there on the Wednesday. So it's not like you have to be, there's not something the Wednesday. The annual meeting's when you have the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. But the, but the chairs meeting usually starts the Thursday and Friday. So.
So Thursday and Friday.
So we could-
I would travel out on Wednesday.
It could be the 24th and 25th.
Yeah, let's do the 24th and 25th and then, we're usually, it's not usually a full day on the second.
No. Yeah.
Usually it is not. So we're looking at potentially the 24th and the 25th being budget hearing dates?
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yes.
And then taking the first off.
And then taking the first off.
Good with that.
I'm not twisting your arm too hard on that one. Okay. And if there's any urgent needs from the 24th being turned into a budget hearing, we might need to implement some other items in that, but I'm sure we can figure that out. Or the chair at that point in time can figure that out.
That would maybe be me. We'll see.
Okay. That sounds like we have consensus to making those changes. Everything else looked good. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I don't think that pen is still up, Vice Chair?
No.
Just wanted to check and make sure. Anyone wish to speak on the changes that we just made to the proposed calendar for 2025? Heated discussion in the back, but I don't think it's the calendar. And we're going to go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the proposed 2025 Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting Calendar as amended.
Second.
Thank you guys for your vote. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. All right. We're going to take a 10-minute break. We will, let's go ahead and take 13. We'll be back at 10:40 a.m.
It's just, uh, yesterday, yes. All right, welcome back. We are going to start with item 7.7. Consideration of Resolution Amending Resolution Number 2024-100, Establishing Position allocations for fiscal year 2425, Budget Unit Number 2111, Public Defender.
Hello.
Ms. Rico.
Hi, Diana Rico, Deputy HR Director. So for your consideration today is a position allocation resolution for Budget Unit 2111, Public Defender. This resolution is removing an Assistant Chief Public Defender and adding a Deputy Public Defender Administrative Manager. The Assistant Chief Public Defender was added during final budgets 2425, but after further review from the Chief Public Defender, it was determined that the office would benefit of an administrative manager, Deputy Public Defender. The Deputy Public Defender Administrative Manager is tied to grade M55, which starts at a monthly salary of $9,436. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions regarding the exchange of positions for the Public Defender's Office?
Just the, uh, the new position still has to be an attorney, right?
Correct, yes. It is an attorney will, uh, they will have a caseload of the more complex cases, but they will also be the administrative manager for that department.
Okay, chunky job.
All right, without any further comments or questions, I do want to also make the statement, thank you so much for the, um, job description being added in there. That's always appreciated, so we can see what we're changing it to. I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no movement in the chamber and no hands in Zoom, and bringing it back to the board for action.
Offer the resolution?
Resolution's been offered.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall. Oh, he's not here. Supervisor Green, Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye.
Sorry. Oh, you guys went on.
I apologize.
No one apologized.
I felt it was uncontroversial. We're gonna move on to item 7.6. Consideration of Presentation Regarding Ongoing Development of a Lake County Regional Housing Trust Fund. And we have Ms. Lisa Judd. Good morning. And next, we'll do the 7.8.
Good morning, Board. Lisa Judd, Deputy County Administrative Officer of Housing. I am very excited to be here today to give you a presentation on a regional housing trust fund. As your Board is aware, the availability and supply of quality housing in Lake County at all income levels is something that is of upper importance for Lake County. It may affect the capacity of local business and county government to maintain quality staff and limit economic opportunity in our region. I wanted to mention also that in addition to today's presentation, that I will also be presenting at the Clear Lake City Council on Thursday, on the 7th, and again at Lakeport on the 19th. There are enclosed in your packets drafts of the MOU and resos for presentation only this time, and I will bring these back to your Board for a final consideration on December 10th. Okay, so, um, we have looked at many options for the Housing Trust Fund, and there were definitely advantages to doing a regional housing trust fund with the, our partners at Lakeport and Clear Lake. The, this Housing Trust Fund would be dedicated to housing production, preservation, and related housing activities in Lakeport, I mean, in Lake County, excuse me. And I think one of the most important advantages to doing it on a regional level is that we will be able to collaborate and use each other's resources and experiences to be able to provide more housing in Lake County. One of the things with a successful Housing Trust Fund is to have that consistency of revenue. I'm not gonna go through all of what's written here on the slide since you have them in your, your packet, but I did want to let you know that these things are here and that in, kind of had a deep dive into housing trust funds, and I have seen again and again a successful for the Housing Trust Fund and then increasing housing in the county or region that they have been established. These are the types of things that a, the Lake County Regional Housing Trust Fund would have incorporated into them. And again, one of the things with that is that we have the flexibility to determine what our priorities are as a Housing Trust Fund in our area and what makes the most sense to make those prioritizations. The first step will be to, of course, create the Lake County Regional Housing Trust Fund, and then, once that's done with our partners, then we would then create those administrative guidelines, and those decisions would be based on a majority vote and not unanimous. Again, those priority, priorities will be addressed at that time, and the obtained additional funding for the Lake County Regional Housing Trust Fund also provides matching opportunities, which is an important distinction as why, one of the reasons why we're looking at doing a regional approach, like the local Housing Trust Fund, if we have the opportunity to apply for that, is only on a regional Housing Trust Fund. So, and that has that dollar-for-dollar match, which we love. At this time, as you know, their Fund, Trust Fund 417 was created. At this time, we have $1 million from ARPA and $1 million from General Fund to contribute towards this Housing Trust Fund. Proposed revenue sources are on the slide as well, including the PLHA funds, the remaining three years there, and transient occupancy tax, in addition to Clear Lake and Lakeport's contributions as well. And then, as we establish, we can look for other additional revenue sources. Again, this goes into the different kinds of activities that you can include for a Housing Trust Fund, and what the administrative plan will do. It really outlines every, all of the activities and how we go about making those decisions. And one of the things in there, it would be a Board of Trustees that would essentially be able to make that, those decisions for which projects get funded. And one thing I wanted to also kind of emphasize is that those priorities would be based on our RENA, so our Regional Housing Needs Assessment, the housing elements, and as well as the Housing Action and Implementation Plan. It is anticipated that the county would be the organization that would administer the Lake County Regional Housing Trust Fund, and, and those would also be, have an administrative cap of around 10% for that fund. Best practices would be things like collaboration between the different partners, releasing NOFAs at specified times, so developers or others that are looking for housing would kind of have an idea of when those things would come out, a developer portal, and things to incentivize developers to say, hey, we're friendly here in Lake County, and that we want to streamline and make things more efficient for you. And then, in closing, the popularity and proliferation of Housing Trust Funds is due to their flexibility, sustainability, and success in addressing critical housing needs.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. So in the draft MOU, I see six or seven references to administrative guidelines that will be written in the future and vetted by the Board of Trustees after it's appointed. Is that my understanding?
Right, so with Housing Trust Funds, there's a great amount of variety in the different, the way they're set up, the things that they address, and the administrative guidelines are, are definitely the, kind of the guidebook for how that will be handled, and all of that would make sense once there is a regional Housing Trust Fund. I have several examples, I'm happy to, you know, share, and, as well as a draft, but really, those partners, we all need to come together so that we can all have appropriate input in how those administrative guidelines would eventually be finalized.
And just a very quick follow-up question. I was looking at the termination clause, and of course, we're not gonna form this trust fund only to back out of it, but the word proportionality came up. So, in the initial funding proposed for this trust fund, I see the county's ponying up a million in General Fund and a million in ARPA, and that's all good. But the city contributions, as much as we appreciate them, don't come anywhere close to that. So, so is it my understanding that within the trust fund, there will be sub-accounts, I think is what the, the slide put in there? So we'll be tracking the proportional contributions of the member agencies?
I think the sub-accounts are more geared towards, like, the type of funding. So if we had grant funding that had certain restrictions and things like that, obviously, the fiscal would be the ones to make that ultimate determination. I appreciate your comments. First, definitely, the $2 million is something that we have set aside for a Housing Trust Fund, but going forward, really, you're looking at $100,000 from the county, $10,000 for Clear Lake, and $5,000 for Lakeport. And part of the thing to really remember here is that the benefit of working on a regional basis is far outweighs the monetary, being able to collaborate on how we can work together and strategize for housing, the opportunities that may arise and things like that. And definitely, it is a starting point and a piece of conversation. It's going to be advantageous to them as well to contribute more to the Housing Trust Fund so that we can have more housing. I think we're all in agreement that housing is something that we all need to really prioritize.
I guess my underlying question is, is, I know we're gonna benefit as a region, but we're gonna have three agencies at the table, and some discussions of proportionality should come up when we're weighing potential projects, including where they're gonna get cited, you know, which project might benefit, you know, the Clear Lake area, what might benefit Lakeport, South County, et cetera. So, you know, other than this bare reference to proportionality and tracking the funding, how is proportionality considered under the guise of this MOU and the administrative guidelines that are gonna be developed?
Okay, I understand what you're asking. So I think the important thing to remember is while we're having an MOU and a reso between the three entities is that there will be a Board of Trustees, and the composition of that board could have a broader, potentially have a broader input. Oftentimes is they'll have someone from, like, the COC, they'll have a community member in addition to designees from the county and the cities as well. So there's the three entities, and then there's this Board of Trustees, and that Board of Trustees would ultimately be the body that would make funding decisions based on the prioritizations that are outlined in the administrative guideline.
Thank you for your questions. Any other comments or questions? So I appreciate the direction that we're going. I don't know how great of a starting line we're creating. I think I would love to see it be a whole lot more, but it's better than where we are currently, so I appreciate that we have at least a, a starting place, a foundation. I, I know that what's being proposed for revenue sources is not starting. It's, those are proposed annual, but I agree that whether I'm thinking the same version of proportionality or not, but at $100,000, $10,000, and $5,000, where my personal opinion is the likelihood of houses being built are probably gonna be more likely in the cities. We'll, we'll find out, but I would like to see the contribution be based on certain criteria, whether it's population or whatever else it might be. I'd also, I know it says to be determined with a minimum, and that's the annual contribution, but what, what kind of initial contribution can also be provided? We're doing an initial $2 million. We've provided some of our housing funds to both the cities who have benefited by building and now receiving, going to be receiving property taxes on those, even though there might be a deferral on some of them for a while, but still, eventually, in the long run, there's a benefit. So just putting out those things, that I'd love to see a, a better ratio of, of what is being proposed, but overall, the concept is, is firm, and let's move forward and, and see how, what kind of feedback we get from the cities.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And these are kind of those opening conversations and obtaining those input as we go to the cities. That is so valuable, so thank you.
If there's nothing further from the Board, let's open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? And seeing none, let's bring it back to the Board, and there's no action. I'm not hearing any change of direction, other than I will see you this Thursday evening at the Clear Lake City Council meeting.
I look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And just for clarification, is the Board giving direction to staff in pursuit of the recommendations under the Board memo to proceed with the creation of the Housing Trust Fund?
So I believe there was no direction to change your direction, which is please keep moving forward.
Yes.
Thank you for requesting that clarification.
And there's no, she'll be coming back December 10th with the final documents, right?
That was the original direction being provided as well, so, yes. No changes to that. Let's see if we can get through this in a swift way. 7.8, Consideration of Chapter 8 Agreement Sale of Tax Defaulted Properties with County of Lake Special District's Administration. We have both our tax collector, Patrick Sullivan, and our special district's administrator, Robin Bore. Director Administrator.
Good morning. I do hope that we can make this swift. So we're here today to present a Chapter 8 Agreement Sale with the Special District's Administration. This is to provide additional infrastructure for special districts in the county, both in county and incorporated area, as well as in the city of Clear Lake. So there are 10 parcels listed. The recommended sale price is a total of $139,000. One of the points I'd highlight is all of these properties have previously been attempted to be sold. Many of them, there were private party attempts to sell them. We have also attempted them at auction without any success. So I, I wanted to highlight that because you will note that some of the appraisal and other information here would suggest a higher price in terms of value for the property, but we did not have success getting anywhere near those prices that they appraised at. So, yeah, 10 parcels, total $139,000. Board of Supervisors' approval would be the first step for the sale to proceed. Four of the parcels are within the city of Clear Lake, so the city council would ultimately have to confirm the price that your Board sets today. Once the city council approves that price, we would send it off to the State Controller's Office to complete the approval process. In the meantime, we would work on all the noticing for the parties of interest and the other administrative steps necessary. So at this point, I would turn it over to the special districts.
Good morning, Board, and staff, and the public. My name's Robin Bore. I'm your special district administrator. So we have several different pieces of property. I'd like to start with first, the ones on Grand View and Mountain View. There, it's a total of 25, almost 25 acres. However, it's not all usable, so that's why, it's on a hill, so the hillside part is not usable. For a $99,000 price, this is right adjacent to our existing water tank for North Lakeport, and one of the highest places in our district, which is a great place to put additional tanks. And that's what we would be using this parcel, these parcels for, is for capacity expansion, fire protection, and overall, the quality of our system. So we would be able to add additional storage tanks and possible chlorine residual injection. And our water system already is connected to the water, to the tank, existing tank up there, so the infrastructure's already there. In the future, if we wanted to expand, we could run the lines down the other side and create more of a circle as well. And so this is for future growth and our capacity in our water system. The one on Crystal Lake Way is also related to the North Lakeport water system. It is almost a five-acre site. It's been appraised at one price, and we are offering $30,000. This is a grant-funded project, and so the acquisition is part of the grant, and then it would be a well site, and the grant would pay for the installation of a well and chlorine injection. And we have infrastructure in Crystal Lake Way where we would expect to be able to inject the water and push it up to the tanks. The other ones are in the city of Clear Lake. There's four different ones. Two on Highlands, which is a little over .3 acres, and they're at the end of the street on Highlands, and it's Highlands Way, not Drive. And this is to mitigate the Conocti Gardens apartment complex. And so, we aren't able to put in the bypass that was originally planned. It was going to have an above, above-ground bypass where they increased the capacity in one of the streets. Well, the city of Clear Lake has overlaid that street, and there's a moratorium on building in that street unless we reconstruct the entire street after the fact. So we won't be able to do anything in that area for over five years. So this is an alternative to put in large manholes, i.e. basically kind of a lift station, holding tank, to be able to meter in the flows from Conocti Gardens and several adjacent properties into the system during low-flow times, so like, middle of the night, that kind of stuff. And will also provide us a pumping location, which is safe to line up pumper trucks in case we have a severe case we have a severe storm and we need to divert the flows. And so, it will allow the trucks to pull completely off the road and in like a U shape, and just line up and go back out. So, it would be more efficient and would not be in the middle of a street and would create additional capacity there for about two to three days holding. So, if we had a severe storm, we wouldn't have to run 24/7 that way as well. And we would also install any odor controls to ensure that they didn't disrupt any of the neighbors. The other two parcels are on Valeo, and I've passed out some maps. And the top one that is in green, these are the flows from the other side of the highway, starting with like Boyle's, a lot of the avenues area, which is a significant amount of flow from the other side of the highway that currently goes, on the second map, you can see the dotted green line, goes all the way down to the lake where we have constant issues with overflows and backs up in the system because of the magnitude of flows that gravity flow all the way down to the lake before then it is pumped to the wastewater plant. So, by purchasing these items on Valeo, they're right next door to each other, so we would be able to put in a large lift station that could capture all the flows coming across the highway. And you can see the purple line, that is our force main that goes directly to the wastewater plant. And so, then that would send the flows directly down the force main and circumvent it going all the way down to the lake and then being pumped back up. And so, those are kind of prime locations for both of those sewer solutions. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much for describing the potential uses for that, the projects that you plan to do. I do have one question for Mr. Sullivan. Typically, when we do any kind of deficit sales, we have to say what that loss looks like. Are we supposed to do that for Chapter 8 to show what the overall taxes is that we're kind of writing off and saying we're going to sell it for this much?
It's different in Chapter 8. It's not the same as Chapter 7, but we can add that information and distribute it.
Okay.
If you'd like. But these are going to be pretty major losses.
Right.
Just for everyone's awareness.
Okay.
On all of them. All of them have been previously offered, so we're selling them all at less than the taxes that are due.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, it's probably just placeholder, but I just noticed on the intent of use, it says economic development and housing production. I think the projects you described broadly speaking could fall under that. But I wonder if that's the most accurate way to term the intent of use of these lands once purchased.
But all of these projects will actually provide additional capacity in both the wastewater system of the southeast and in the water system of northwest, of North Lakeport. So, that's why that fit in there. It's truly infrastructure improvements.
And to me, that would be the more accurate phrase. You know, indirectly, there may be economic development potential or potential to serve future housing, but that's not the intent that we're attempting to put in here. So, I'd look the county council if that's totally accurate. And I know it's just placeholder language, but I'd like to be more specific on the intent of that use.
I might add that really, under Chapter 8, the authority is just for public purpose. So, anything more descriptive than just a serving a public purpose is more of an internal requirement. The State Controller is just evaluating whether there is some sort of public good that comes out of it. So, we could broaden that description or leave it alone. I don't think it would interfere with their analysis.
Thank you for that. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Seen no hands in Zoom, no motion in the chamber. Bring it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Chapter 8 Agreement Sale of Tax Defaulted Properties with County of Lake Special District's Administration.
And your Board may want to add as part of their motion unauthorized the Chair to sign?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for bringing this to us. Thank you for your help, County Council. All right, let's go ahead and move on to our 11:00 AM item. Thank you for your patience. Public hearing, hearing for the Lake County Hospital Improvement District. And it looks like Mr. Rickelman is coming up.
Ben Rickelman, Deputy County Administrative Officer. Here for the public hearing for the proposed Lake County Hospital Improvement District. As it is a business-based assessment district, it's required by state law to have both a public meeting, which we had earlier, and now a public hearing. And the last step would be a resolution of formation. So, on the subsequent Board meeting, we would bring that forward for consideration. For this meeting, I did, as discussed in the public meeting, a template for the annual report. So, that would give a flavor to kind of the annual reporting requirements the two hospitals, Sutter Lakeside and Adventist Clear Lake would provide. It would show the additional compensation they would receive from the federal government through this district, and then the activities and programs the money was spent on. I do have here leadership for both hospitals and their council, if there's additional questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions from Board members regarding this item? Seeing none. I do want to talk about the report. I appreciate that there was effort made to create a template of a report of what would be coming to us. I'd like to suggest some additions. I'm not sure exactly how those additions would be added, but here's basically the concept behind it. We have 51% or more of our population that are Medi-Cal recipients and that are served by these hospitals in some way, shape, or form, or through other clinics. Part of this came to us due to the reimbursements that Medi-Cal provides, which is unfortunately the lowest reimbursement rates that they'll probably receive compared to private insurance or others. And so, I'd like to make sure that we're still serving that population as things move forward with this Business Improvement District. So, if there's a way to see if there's a increase in Medi-Cal patients that are being served or stagnation, something that can help us better understand that we're still serving that population in the best way possible. Also, this was talked about, and I was told it won't have an impact, but I think it'd be useful seeing, I don't want to call it fees, maybe it is called fees, maybe it's called rates, I don't know. But to see what are the current rates today for medical services, and what will they be in the following years? Are we seeing the standard increase that we're seeing across the Board for all healthcare facilities throughout the state, throughout the country, throughout the county? Or are we seeing a sudden 50% increase where I think that would be a red flag type of situation? And so, those two types of items, again, I don't know how to specifically request the exact data, because I want to make sure it makes sense. But those are my two thoughts that I would like to see added to the report for something that I think should be fairly simple to provide, but just to make sure that the taxing of the entities has not increased the fees, and that this approval of this Business Improvement District has been to the benefit of the Medi-Cal recipients that we know is the majority of our community members in Lake County. Like to hear from my colleagues about those additions and their thoughts. I'd also like to hear from the hospitals on their thoughts on if that's a doable request or not. Any comments regarding that? So, let's hear from the hospitals.
Good morning, Board. Chuck Cassis, Administrator at Adventist Health Clear Lake.
Good morning, Board. Tim Stevens, CEO, Center of Lakeside.
And what you're suggesting is very easily to add into our report, so we'd be happy to comply with that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. That answers it for me, then.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Looks like there's consensus to see if we can add that in the report in the appropriate way, because my wording may not have been the most appropriate way. But I do appreciate the support for the annual report and this effort made to bring us what would be suggested in there. And the financial statement, I think, is an important part of that. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. We have Betsy Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Betsy Khan for the Essential Public Information Center. I have three questions for you regarding this item. In the, on page five, in the third and fourth paragraphs of the management plan, the expected revenue is estimated to be $84 million, roughly $84,600,000, based upon what is expected to be an annual income of $16,900,000. But the first paragraph says that the current revenue being generated is $15 million, $15,300,000, which amounts to $76,500,000 over the five years. How did you get that? How did you make that leap? What's that based upon? Next question is, in your, in the fifth paragraph, it states that the district will be governed by the Lake County Board of Supervisors, which will be responsible for collecting the assessments and will update the assessments using patient revenue from hospital Medicare cost reports. And it should also include Medi-Cal reports, Medi-Cal revenues that are reported. That seems to be a little lapse there in the language. There's nothing in the management plan that indicates how the governed, the Board of Supervisors will govern the district. And in the last question is, on the eighth paragraph, it says the county may withdraw or use money in the account only for a purpose authorized in the plan, but I did not see any statement of the purposes authorized in the management plan. So, I find these areas of missing information to be significant enough that I believe you should require those before you approve this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so, we received three questions. Mr. Rickelman, would you like to make an attempt? Do we need the hospital leadership to come up?
I can go through them, and then we can go from there. So, with the ramp up, I'm assuming, and I think council can answer this better, but it's just kind of anticipated growth with the Medi-Cal population service. So, I mean, we won't, these are estimations, and so, it's a reimbursement of service. So, we'll just have to see where that goes. These are projections. For the services, we've kind of talked about this before. Now, as a county government, we're not in the space of operating a hospital. And so, we have these metrics, reporting metrics back in the annual report, and showing that it's not impacting fees. And then they'll report out what they're doing with these programs and services. So, I think the hospitals are much more qualified for that, but we do have the oversight mechanism as the Board overseeing the district and then the annual report.
And the district being the financial district and the funds that we receive and provide to the hospitals for the projects and plans that they will have.
Correct. And the initial term of the district is just five years, and then it would require Board approval for renewal. So, this isn't for an indeterminate length, so we'll have oversight and see how it plays out.
And just, if I may add to the first question about the difference between the $15 million and the $16 million, it does say in that second paragraph where $16 million is there that there will, an anticipated growth of 5% each year. And so, you start out with the $15 million, you get the 5% increases, and what the first paragraph starts off with is it would be an annual average. That doesn't mean that's the first collection. It doesn't mean it's the last collection. It just means overall, there will be an average because of the anticipated $84 million total that will be collected. So, projections, but that's more looking at the overall five-year term versus a single year term based on projections from today. I did like the comment about Medicare. Maybe we could, if possible, Medicare and Medi-Cal cost reports. Not sure if that's something to, that would add a burden.
It's the same report.
It's just called Medicare Cost Report?
Yes, sir.
Includes, okay. And I think you alluded to it, there is no very specific project list based on what these funds will do, but there is a vague description of what they can be utilized for. And it was mentioned earthquake retrofit type of potential projects and things of the likes. So, I think that we will hear the report of what it is being spent on. It's not up to us to say what you should be spending it on. At least, that's my perspective on it. Okay. I'm seeing nods. And so, let's go ahead and bring it back to the Board. There's no further public comment. And at this moment in time, we will be coming back. What's the date again?
Yeah, December 3rd.
December 3rd. Okay. And so, we will see each other again. Let's see how we move forward. Thank you very much.
Sounds great. Thank you, Board.
I believe everything has been, and we'll do those a little later. Let's go ahead and do our, because I want to make sure we're on time for our closed session. Let's go ahead and do our weekly calendars, if we can do that in nine minutes. Supervisor Green?
Easy cheesy. I'll try to get to a COC on Thursday. Friday, Clear Lake High School is having Reach Higher Day, and I think I'm committed to go there. And that's for grade six to 12. Basically, some of our local institutions and agencies, Lake County included, will be showing up to tell the kids how to prepare for their future careers, whether they're going to college or other type of career training. And so, it's a good outreach event, and I hope it does encourage young folks to at least consider college or advanced work training as being ultimately necessary. I know college degrees aren't as popular as they used to be, but regardless of any specific skill sets you may get in that, college, college can help train your brain. And I encourage the young folks to at least consider dipping their toes in that water. And it looks like next week, all I have is a follow-up bylaw subcommittee meeting for EMCC. And we're not meeting next Tuesday, so I guess I won't have to meet with C.A.O. Parker on Monday.
Supervisor Simon?
All right. Meeting today, later on this week, I have the Space Use Committee that will be joining that meeting on Thursday. Trying to schedule a Workforce Alliance in North Bay meeting either this week or next week, just trying to get everybody together. We got a grant that needs to be approved within 10 days. We're just working on that. Obviously, the last football game, Middletown, 40 years for Bill Fulmer. That'll be happening this Friday, pretty, pretty big event. But also, I want to talk about just community issues. PSPS is coming here to Lake County and many other surrounding counties. Please be prepared. I know there is, PG&E will be setting up a Resource Center in South County at the Event Center. It'll be open tomorrow. So, other than that, please protect yourself, be prepared. It's the best that we can do.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
Thursday, I have the UC Extension.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. Lunch, too.
Yeah, lunch and another meeting with CDD after that. I've got some doctor's appointments this week, obviously. Friday. Friday, RCDRA meeting on wood product infrastructure. Another meeting with LCBS, another meeting with RRA and zoning land use, and then I will be at the football game. And then next Wednesday, I've got my NACO ELU, RRA biomass subcommittee, BVAC. There's also the Sober East Wine Alliance Award meeting. And Thursday, I am double booked with Fire Safety Council and a medical thing and an NCO meeting. And then Friday, the 5th, I've got a CSAT class and a tree mortality meeting.
Okay.
Oh, and then I guess I don't want to go for the rest of the month.
Good enough. Vice Chair Crandall?
So I'll start with reporting out on the clash for trash, clash against trash. I don't know why I always put four. So I want to say that it was successful. It was almost, and this is according to the gentleman working there that worked on the weekends, appreciate their willingness to do so, CNS Waste. They said they, they said it's probably close to 30 tons this time. As before, I know it was like 18 or 19. So I'm waiting to see the amount come out on the document that's usually sent and hoping it's accurate. Of course, that was just an estimation because of their, you know, experience with how much goes into those garbage collectors. So anyhow, successful. I mentioned it earlier, Vance Ricks helped me out with a couple of loads. We went around and picked up some garbage, and it was just really good to have an extra pair of hands on that, you know? So, yeah, it was a pretty good, successful day. Got some things out at Pile Road. So anyhow, there was that. Yesterday, well, no, I'm sorry, Sunday, there was a grand opening Lucerne Bistro. They moved places, and now they're open for business in Lucerne. So it's, they were at the end of town, over by 10th and 11th Street, now they're by Second and Third Streets. So right on the highway still, really, really good place. It was well-attended by many folks in the county, you know? So that was really promising to see there, because as we know, it's very difficult to stay operating on Highway 20 and in different areas. So these folks have been doing a really good job with their, with their food and with welcoming people. It's a really warm feeling when you go there. So leave it at that. Tomorrow, well, after the meeting, I'll be going to the RCRC meeting. So I go out there today, and then we have the meeting in the morning. Then I travel back here to Earth East Region Town Hall. It's at the Moose Lodge in Clear Lake Oaks. And then the CSA meeting out in Spring Valley Thursday, or I think it's, yeah, Thursday we have the Space Use Committee. Sunday, I'm pretty sure that Thomas said he came in this morning, and he does the Rodman Sluke cleanup, the Asevis crew. So we'll see. I'll just leave it as a tentative, but I'm pretty sure it needs the attention, so we might do it. More than likely, we'll do it. Veterans Day event at Canuckti Vista, 10:00 AM on Monday. So if you're a veteran and you want to attend that, that's a good place to go. They provide lunch. And let's see, I know I have the solid waste, no, no, that's in two weeks. Let me go back one more real quick. Well, I'll just leave it at that, because I'm not, my calendar's being weird.
Thank you very much. Tomorrow, I will have a pre-meeting for our upcoming CSAT Annual Conference down in LA, meeting with the Administration of Justice Committee to make sure we're ready to go for our annual meeting. Meeting with the Continuum of Care, have a NACO Health Steering Committee, and a meeting with the Blue Zones Food Systems, folks from Monterey who are working on very similar projects. Starting off Thursday with the Judges Breakfast and the Pick Count Committee from the COC. Are, I'll see if Sutter is available for their weekly. They're looking at a upgrade in their, I don't remember the exact CSU. It's basically an enhanced care service and just something that kind of came out of conversations we had through the COC and some of the situations that we've experienced. Meeting with Lake EDC, Blue Zones, and then our COC General Board meeting will be happening later on that day, and also Clear Lake City Council, where I'll see Ms. Judd. Also, going backwards, on the 6th, I do have a town hall, I'll be taking part of one in the city of Clear Lake with Mayor Claffey on that day. I'm going to breeze through the rest. We don't have a meeting the following week due to holidays. There's an LTA APC meeting happening on the 13th. The Hope Rising is doing their Innovation Summit Dinner on the 14th, as well as the Innovation Summit on the 15th. And the following week, I will be gone all week to LA for the CSAT Annual Conference, and then will be returning back for our December 3rd meeting. That is it for calendars. Please.
I just forgot one last thing to mention. Went out to the Lucerne Harbor where they're prepping. Tomorrow should be the first day they start working on dredging the harbor, so I just wanted to make sure that was out there. So, yeah.
We appreciate the update. That's been a topic of conversation for a while, so knowing it's moving forward and physically happening is awesome. Thank you for that, and we'll go ahead and close out for the moment. We'll come back in the afternoon for our open session, but we are going to conclude this morning's session in closed session. And let me go ahead and read out our closed session. 8.1, Conference with Legal Counsel. Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9D1, FERC Project Number 77, Powder Valley Hydroelectric Project. 8.2, 11:30 AM, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. 8.3, 1 PM, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. 8.4, 2 PM, Public Employee Evaluation, Title Chief Public Defender. And with that, we are going to go into closed session, and we will return to open session at 1:30 PM.